Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, May eighth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Our minutes for four nineteen twenty-three, four twenty-four twenty-three were received. Do we have any comments or corrections? The minutes will stand as submitted. Consent Agenda One motion. Final passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and official zoning map of the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R two residential to R four residential for properties legally described as the north half of Lot one three dash one six in Block three nine of Broadwater Addition and the south half of Lots thirteen dash sixteen in Block thirty-nine of the Broadwater Addition, both to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County. Discussion Commissioners?
Mister Mayor, I will move to approve Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commission proposals from Commissioners, what say you?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, this last week, I attended the Fire Ops one oh one in Boise, Idaho, uh, thanks to the I A F F four four eight in the Helena Fire Department and Captain Mike McDaniel. Um, I want to thank them for the opportunity to attend Fire Ops one oh one, uh, to learn more about what are, what Helena's bravest do every day. So, thank you very much.
So what did you learn?
Well, I learned that fire is very hot and I was not cut out to be a firefighter. It's like wearing a sleeping bag um, in five hundred degrees heat. It was incredible. I appreciate the opportunity to attend.
Thanks, Commissioner. Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Commissioners, I'd like to take a few minutes and report on the status of the swimming pool budget.
Please.
As you know, uh, we're in fiscal year twenty-three and really due to temporary salary adjustments and
Today.
other considerations, we're sitting right now uh, at forty-three thousand overspent in the budget. Uh, I think that just rough estimate, if the Commission chooses to maintain the status quo hours, et cetera, it would probably cost a hundred thousand dollars to close out the year. And then, of course, starting July one is the new uh, F Y twenty-four budget and the Commission's not made any final decisions relative to funding uh, with that, with that budget. So, uh, I guess I would open it up for discussion, uh, Mayor, if, uh, if the Commission comes to some consensus and directs directs me to put together a budget resolution, then I would so proceed.
Okay, thank you, Manager Burton. I see Commissioner Reed, your hands up.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, just a question, uh, for the manager. I I had originally heard a forty thousand dollar overage and now it's a hundred. So could you help me understand the overage and through what period of time that goes? And when the new numbers would kick in, just because I I seem to be a little confused. Thank you.
Yep. Mayor, Commissioner Reed, the, I think it is forty-three? Okay, presently, I see this.
Director Danielson is coming to the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, currently, the, a- as of today, the, the pool is overspent by forty-three thousand dollars. They're proposing, um, in order for training costs, in order to get ready for the next year, that it's going to cost another eighty thousand to the city. Um, that would put them, you know, a hundred and twenty-three thousand over budget in fiscal year twenty-three. Um, and that does not address the, uh, the proposed, um, you know, if the Commission chooses to, 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 uh, have the pool open, um, as status quo, we would have to allocate likely another eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to next year's budget, um, to keep the, the, the pool going as status quo.
Right. Thank you, Director Danielson, uh. Commissioner Reed? Are you okay?
Uh, well, uh, Mister Mayor, if I might, just, just a quick question. So the forty thousand we're over as of today is a result of last season's activities? And if we're doing the extra eighty to prepare for this, the season that would begin in June, and then we would need another eighty to a hundred thousand for the following year, again, the timeline is a little bit confusing and I'm just trying to understand ongoing what a budget for the pool open on the weekends would look like. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So, um, we've currently, um, budgeted with, um, a scaled back schedule in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Um, regardless of whether we scale that back or not, they have to spend money to train up their staff um, before the pool opens. So that is going to add the additional, um, costs in fiscal twenty-three that weren't budgeted for. Um, that would then be the same for, for fiscal year twenty-four. So in, uh, you know, on average, we look at the expenditures there, they, uh, uh, as status quo, they, um, over the prior year before the wages were increased, over a two hundred thousand dollar increase in their, their annual operating budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Mayor.
Wait, wait, one minute, one minute. Are you done, Commissioner Reed?
Yes, I'm sorry. I said thank you, but I I spoke at the wrong moment. Thank you. That clarifies my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean.
So Mister Mayor, I, if there were interest from the Commission, I think I would be, I'd propose that we, um, maybe consider asking staff to draft some sort of resolution or amendment to the budget, um, to use ARPA funds to buy us some time. Um, I think that the Parks Department has shown through the golf course and the Civic Center that if we give them enough lead time, they can turn around a pretty solid business plan that writes some of our, um, operations in, in a better direction. Um, and then also meets some of the requests to ensure that we have the pool open, um, at those regular, well, formerly regular hours, um, but the weekend hours. And I guess the final request would be part of the issue is that we are required by state law to have so many staff on hand, um, given the pool safety precautions. So are there some ways that we can close off parts of the pool or not? Um, I think that might be a question for when we get closer to the end of the F Y twenty-four budget. But I would propose that we utilize ARPA dollars to close out the current fiscal year and then ensure operation through the summer to buy us some time, um, and have a solid plan going into the next summer's, um, swim season.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, uh, just to add, uh, and I'm sure you guys can be creative. So I think we should look into this and see how best we can be very creative in. You know, there were some, um, ideas thrown around before and I still think it's, um, it's a viable idea where we charge according to where we're from. Because the, uh, City of Helena cannot continue to bear the brunt of everybody in the county. We need to start looking at that. The same thing with the golf course. We're doing the same thing. And, uh, I think they're being, we're bleeding dry. So we got to look at some creative ways to see how best we can make this work.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, I gotta say, I'm supportive of Commissioner Dean's idea about the use of ARPA money, although I'm and, and I don't say this in a, with any disrespect at all, but I'm not wild about the idea of one-time money sort of uh, being used for an, an ongoing expense, but I think we're at a point where, and we've heard, I've heard from some members of the public about, you know, the proposed hours changes and, and, uh, shortening of the season and so forth and, and, you know, I think it's pretty clear that the pool is a valued resource by the community. Um, and absent, well, I just think it's, it's a difficult time to try to make some significant creative decisions, um, with the opening so close. And so I think, I think the ARPA idea certainly gives, uh, the potential for, you know, helping staff and the community really to, to have the pool sta- at status quo as it, as it has been, as, as the community is accustomed to it. And so I'd be open to Commissioner Dean's idea. Um, again, not wild about it principally, but um, I think it, it could buy us some time. And I think it's fair that, you know, maybe we at some point in the near future, um, have a more robust discussion about how we kind of arrived where we're at. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I would also, uh, echo what Commissioner Logan said. I, I would prefer not to use ARPA for this. Um, however, if we're unable to find savings in other places to adjust for this year, um, if, if that is our only hope, then that I would, I would support that. Um, I do think it's important also just for the community, uh, given the number of calls and emails I've gotten on the subject. Um, if we could get some clarity, because the website currently does say that it will be closed on weekends. Um, so I think to the extent that we're able to make some decisions and communicate to the public whether or not the pool will be open on weekends and what the season will be. Um, I think that would be great. I know there's some, some very, uh, nervous parents out there right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I have to, uh, echo, uh, the Commissioner's statements, uh, as pool is a cornerstone of our community. And if this proposal can buy us some time and get us through the fiscal year and help us prepare for fiscal year twenty-four, um, I think this one-time use of ARPA funds, uh, could be could be useful. And also too, I agree with Commissioner Reed that we need to communicate with the public what we're doing and how we're looking to fix this. So, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is your report? Are you done with your report?
I am, Mayor, and I've got the direction I believe I need. Thank you.
Okay. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Joel Leman, you have the floor. Madam Clerk.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Last week, uh, H C C had an in-person.
Can you raise up your volume, please? You're very low.
Oh, let me, let me, pardon. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Um, last week, H C C had an in-person only meeting at the Civic Center. It was our first one and I think about a year, uh, to hold a strategic planning session that went really well. Uh, we set our priorities for the coming year. Uh, we still have some work to do with that, but we're off to a good start. Uh, we also began our preliminary work on city budget reviews and we look forward to presenting, uh, the Commission with our recommendations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Representative Leman? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Regular items. Consider a resolution distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Fund to City of Helena's Transportation Systems Department, Family Outreach Incorporated, and Ray Coons Development L C C to install sidewalks, crosswalks, and parking improvements in the vicinity of Helena and Gallington Avenues. Manager Burton or Planner Ray or Director Brink, you have the floor.
Apologies, Mayor and Commissioner, I was being asked questions about the pool. Um, tonight, you're being asked to consider a resolution for a distribution of railroad tax increment financing dollars. Um, these dollars will be used to make sidewalk, crosswalk, and parking improvements along Helena and Gallatin Avenues in the Sixth Ward. Um, this application was submitted on August eighth of twenty twenty-two. It had been percolating for a while before we actually did receive it. There was a lot of coordination with Transportation Systems staff over the proposal. Um, and out of this effort, what the district will gain is twenty-six additional on-street parking spaces by installing angled parking along both Helena and Gallatin Avenues in the, as shown in the application materials. Um, additionally, through the striping of those new spaces on Helena, it will actually serve as traffic calming by necking down the travel lanes on that route. Um, Gallatin will actually be converted into a one-way street going west from the intersection of Helena and Gall- Gallatin over to North Cook. Um, and at that intersection, Family Outreach, one of our local nonprofits owns a number of properties there, and they will actually piggyback on this effort by installing some new parking spaces. Um, in addition to those parking items, there's going to be the installation of a new sidewalk segment at thirteen fourteen, um, Helena Avenue. We have gotten the full support from the property owner, the Marlos, um, to do this. Um, and this is going to be hugely beneficial for pedestrian connectivity in the area. And at the end of that, at the corner of the property, they're actually going to install a bulb out. And at that bulb out, they're going to have crosswalks going across both Helena and Gallatin Avenues to serve all those businesses in that area. Um, the total cost of this is projected to be over two hundred sixty thousand dollars. The application request was for fifty percent of that, which comes to one hundred thirty thousand, thirty-three dollars and eighty cents. And when the Railroad Tiff Advisory Board met on August eighteenth in twenty twenty-two, they unanimously recommended approval. Um, so that, uh, are the, those are the nuts and bolts of what the proposal is. I did want to note that, as with my last presentation for a Railroad Tiff application, there are some changes that need to be made to the draft resolution that came before you. So I will coordinate with the City Attorney's Office on that. There are four areas that to my knowledge, need amending, just to reflect that, um, Transportation Systems are not an applicant on this. Actually, it's just, uh, Family Outreach Incorporated and Ray Coons Development LLC. Um, we do have representation from both those entities here tonight. So Brad Coon is here on behalf of Ray Coons um, from Triple Tree Engineering, and we also have Jackie Muller from Family Outreach. So if you have questions of me or of them, we are happy to answer those for you. And again, apologies.
Thank you, Lana Ray. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mister Mayor, I have a couple. Um, for Ms. Ray, how? So when we're making these improvements, how do they then play into the master plan for the area moving forward? Do we just account for them, like, that those improvements have already occurred?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, if I am understanding your question, uh, correctly, um, that actually, the, these particular improvements weren't called out as such in the urban renewal district plan. Um, but it is something that is, it is in alignment with the goals and objectives of that plan, as noted in the, um, materials for this evening. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yep, that's what I was asking. Um, and then the other question was, um, I read in the minutes, this obviously happened last August.
Yes.
So what's the timeline for completion now?
Uh, now things will get completed this summer. They actually, I believe, um, and I will refer to Brad Coon on this point, but I believe that they've actually started some of the work.
Okay.
Right now, or they were intending to have started it sooner. And just to clarify, the reason for the holdup was actually, um, needing to coordinate with the Marlos, the property owners at thirteen fourteen Helena Avenue, to assure that we had buy-in um, for this effort. Thanks. Yep.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mister Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner. Just a clarifying question. Uh, Ms. Ray, you indicated that City of Helena's Transportation Systems Department is not part of this, correct?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, yes, that's correct. They, um, so at least for the purposes of the resolution, they're not going to be receiving funding directly from this effort. Um, the applicants will be taking that on. Um, but they have been in coordinating with them for, I want to say about a year and a half on this design and this proposal, possibly longer.
So in any motion, just leave them out of it?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, yes.
Okay.
That would be correct. And I think it's safe to just, uh, strike out after it says, um, financing funds two, just strike out the portion entirely about Transportation Systems and move directly to Family Outreach Incorporated, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Funds to Family Outreach Incorporated and Ray Coons Development LLC to install sidewalks, crosswalks, and parking improvements in the vicinity of Helena and Gallatin Avenues.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider first passage of an ordinance amending Helena City Court Title eleven, Chapter two, Section eleven dash two dash three, Table one, eleven dash two dash four, land use definition for zoning district and eleven dash two dash five supplemental requirements of the City of Helena zoning regulation as they relate to marijuana sales and operations. Manager Burton and/or Director Brink, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, in the interest of time, I do have a PowerPoint, but not to, uh, to rehash this. We'll bring this back up for final pass and public hearing in two weeks. I'll just hold that PowerPoint presentation for that time, if you, if you'll allow me to. Um, so tonight, before you as an ordinance, uh, draft ordinance recommending some changes to, uh, our zoning requirements, specifically the land use ta- table and definitions, uh, supplemental requirements, um, for the zoning ordinance to permit adult-use marijuana facilities and operations in the city. Uh, in November of twenty twenty, uh, through Initiative one ninety, um, the citizens voted and elected to, to allow adult-use operations in the state and specifically within Lewis and Clark County as a green county. Uh, but those provisions were codified in, in January, or twenty twenty-one, uh, effective January first of twenty twenty-two. Um, and that is known as Montana Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act. Uh, and basically what that allowed was for non-medical operations, uh, to be permitted, uh, effective January first of twenty twenty-two. Um, with a caveat, um, that existing holders of medical licenses could convert their licenses to recreational adult-use permits. Your license had to be in good standing and you had to be in compliance with M C A, uh, Department Revenue Rules and local ordinances in fact, in effect as of January first. Uh, part of that, um, uh, Regulation and Taxation Act, uh, did provide for Gen- July first of twenty twenty-three, that D R would open up uh, applications for anybody, even those that did not have prior licenses to be able to, uh, to operate in the city. Uh, those were segregated to the sales, cultivation, manufacturing, and transporters. Uh, and again, it opens it up for any operations or operators not currently or formally licensed by the, by the state. Uh, we've made some changes to, or recommended changes to the land use table, like I said, uh, allows cultivation dispensaries, manufacturers, testing labs, uh, transporter facilities within certain zoning districts, uh, mirroring what we have in the current, uh, ordinance, but some changes. Uh, grow operations are now cultivators, cultivation operations. Uh, we've permitted them by right, uh, now in C L M and C U P, which originally they were, um, conditional use permits. Uh, and then, um, we've provided for manufacturers only to be operated in, um, the M I district. Uh, the zoning ordinance or the, the recommended changes as added, adds seven, um, definitions. Uh, and again, those come from, uh, the M C A. Um, zoning ordinance recommendation or changes, uh, does revise the supplemental requirements, um, to, to allow and address, uh, adult-use sales and operations. Uh, not many changes, uh, we have added, uh, to distance requirements, uh, some provisions from distances from daycares, public buildings and parks. Uh, same for cultivation, where we've added daycare to the, to the distance requirements as well as public building and parks. Um, for cultivation, and this is part of how we are, while we eliminated the conditional use permit, uh, we've placed these into, uh, what we felt were appropriate zoning categories or zoning districts uh, based on the, the canopy size or the, the size of the operation. So a tier one canopy, by definition, we can stage as anything less than a thousand square feet. We've allowed that as permitted use by right and the C L M. And anything larger from a cultivate cultivation facility, if it's a tier two or above, um, we've, uh, permitted that as a use by right in the M I district. Um, all operations have to be indoors, um, must be secured and locked, and then we've added provisions for air discharge and, um, ventilation systems, uh, for cultivators. Uh, and like I said earlier, existing operations are permitted to, uh, to continue as grandfathered uses in their location, provided they, they stay the same size. On April the eleventh of this year, the Zoning Commission, um, recommended some changes and you'll see, you see those in your packet. Uh, since then, with, within collaboration with City Attorney's Office, we've made some minor alterations to the draft recommendations, didn't change the substance of the requirements. Um, just followed some of the, the minimum state statute requirements. So we, we felt we needed to include those. Uh, and you see those in blue are the, the City Attorney recommended changes. So to conclude, uh, the staff does recommend, uh, first passage of this draft ordinance, um, tonight. And then again, on May twenty-second, you'll see this for final passage and a public hearing. Um, by state statute, we have to have this in place, um, by June the thirtieth to allow these operations to, to, uh, apply to the state, um, on July the first. Uh, if we don't have these provisions in place, the way our ordinance is structured, they will not be permitted within the city.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mister Mayor, I do have one question. So on, um, in some of the new language, one of the items, it's well, on page one, ten of our agenda packet, but it's number two, um, under distance and location. Um, it talks about the, uh, public building facility or park owned by the City of Helena. I'm thinking of a couple places that I downtown in particular, that seem close to city-owned, um, parks. Would they not have fallen under that before or do we know?
So we've identified four facilities or four operations that, um, would have to be under the grandfather provisions of this ordinance.
Okay.
Um, they're, they're not within city facilities, but they are within some parks. Um, particularly, there's a couple that are on Lindale, uh, one that's on East Broadway, one that's on Last Chance. Um, there was a couple that, that were permitted that, that probably shouldn't be permitted by the state anyway. They didn't want to divulge that, but maybe shouldn't have been.
Okay.
But we would allow those to be grandfathered with, with uh, only the provision of this ordinance, uh, applicable if they decided to enlarge.
Okay, one more fault, Mister Mayor. With those, if they're grandf- With those, if they're grandfathered in and say the owner decides to close operations, if they sell the business, does that grandfathering clause continue or, or would they have to move the, their location?
So the, the, the license by the state is non-transferable?
Okay.
So, so we would consider that as now a, a new permitted use, that have to go back through the process.
Great. That answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Director Brink, you had mentioned, uh, the facility, uh, the growing operation must be inside or indoors, and you said it must be secure. Can you go into depth, in-depth on that security?
So those security measures are part of the, the state statute requirements, D R. I'm not sure one hundred percent, uh, what that would entail, um, but we, we would rely on the state to, to provide direction on, on what's, that consider secure. We just mirrored what was in the state statute regarding that this got to be secure. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a follow-up.
Please.
Thank you, uh, Director Brink. Thank you for the answer. Also too, on page one ten, uh, it states within one thousand feet or on the same street as a public or private K, K through twelve school or any daycare facility. Uh, have you identified any, any businesses or schools that are within that range that would fall under the grandfather clause?
Yeah, so one, one that I mentioned was one that's down here on Last Chance Gulch. Um, that is within a thousand feet of the
Central.
The, uh, within the, the, what is it? The, the alternative school, alternative learning center. That one is even within the provisions currently. So it's, it's within that, that distance that the state has, and I'm not sure how that got licensed, to be honest with you. But that would be the only one that's within certain dis, within a thousand feet from school. That one is actually three hundred and twenty feet. And currently it's a thousand, or it's five hundred feet currently in state statute.
That prompts a follow-up question. What happens if we? I mean, I know that D O R is just getting staffed up and figuring all of this out as well. What happens if we catch something that they don't? Do I even want to ask that question?
Yeah, maybe not. Um, just first blush, we would let that continue as a, as a non-conforming use from a city standpoint and, and let a complaint or a question be directed to D O R directly. Um, but we as a city would continue to let that operate with a city license.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve first passage of an ordinance amending Helena City Code Title eleven, Chapter two, Sections eleven, two, three, Table one, eleven to four, land use definitions for zoning districts, and eleven to five supplemental requirements of the City of Helena zoning regulations as they relate to marijuana sales and operations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider artist award for Centennial Trail Tunnel mural. Commission, uh, okay, I see Superintendent Sampson coming up. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Um, tonight, uh, I'm here so that we can consider an artist award for the Centennial Trail Tunnel mural. Uh, the Community Facilities Department, along with the Helena Public Art Committee, published a call for artists to commission a painted mural along the side walls of the Centennial Trail Tunnel under Last Chance Gulch between Centennial Park and Memorial Park. Thirteen qualified submissions were received. The Public Art Committee reviewed and scored the thirteen anonymous submissions on April seventeenth. The top three finalists were discussed and the committee voted unanimously to recommend submission number three, artist Elise Perpinano. Staff has vetted the artist submission and agrees with the recommendation. If the contract is awarded, the project will begin the first of June and be completed by the end of August. So tonight we'd like to consider awarding the contract to artist Elise Perpinano to paint a mural on the Centennial Tunnel Trail under Last Chance Gulch for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the fifteen thousand dollars, um, is in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, um, as a capital project for the Helena Public Art Committee. Um, I do have, uh, I want to share the, uh, draft. I guess the artist submission with everyone. So give me one second. Okay, so, um, this is the submission, um, by Ms. Perkin now. It is a, a rough sketch of her layout and we'll be working with the artist to refine the content. Um, so again, tonight we're just looking for, um, a motion to move to award the contract. And I'm available for any questions.
Thanks Superintendent Sampson. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Uh, and come on, I thought these things were Do we have any other public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would be pleased to move to award a contract with artist Elise Perpignano to install a mural on the Centennial Trail Tunnel under Last Chance Gulch between Centennial Park and Memorial Park.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings, consider an ordinance establishing a parade, special event, tours, and vendor requirements and amending the possession of intoxicating beverages code in the City of Helena. Manager Burton and or Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, this is the public hearing for the revisions to the special events ordinance. Um, as we had talked earlier, or last week, the special, as we have gone through the special event permitting process over the last couple of years, there's been some things identified that could make the process easier, um, for not only staff, but also for the applicants. So, you know, in hearing these, we review, we review whatever is, uh, commented on and, uh, if there are appropriate actions to be made, then, um, we bring them forward. And in this case, um, there are a couple, as outlined in the memo, um, section five, one, one, the possession of intoxicating beverages. Uh, we're going to revise that to have the city manager be able to issue that basically waiver, um, instead of coming, um, to the commission every time for that. Um, Parade nine, one, uh, special event permits are required. And then moving some sections from seven, nine, five to nine, one, one, to basically put all the special events into one location, so they're not kind of scattered throughout the code. I won't go through every change, um, um, with you unless you have questions on that. Uh, basically the advantage is this clarifies the special events requirements and expectations and puts everything in one, in a single location. Um, we did not see any notable disadvantages to this and therefore recommending the commission, um, pass the second passage of this ordinance this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, can you briefly explain what the process will be, um, for example, for the neighborhood block parties in terms of their options of requiring, um, liability insurance if they have alcohol? I got a couple more calls over well, last week and then another one today concerned about their ability to acquire insurance. I'm wondering if you might be able to talk about that a little bit.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, um, so the process would be they would, uh, apply through the normal process. And as per city code now and moving forward, um, insurance is required in checking, uh, M M I A's website, they have a little section there for special events. And they have there on there that, um, a regular special event with no alcohol is about fifty-nine dollars for the insurance. And then depending on the, the size of the event with the alcohol, it raises up. As we heard at the last, uh, at our budget meeting, um, one of the block parties said that they were able to find through Payne West, um, insurance that covered alcohol, I think it was like for two hundred and fifty-four dollars. So they would just purchase that insurance and then, um, applied for the application or apply for their permit. And then it would go through the normal commenting period, um, through all the department heads and they would receive their comments back.
Director Knopki, I heard you saying some of fifty-nine dollars for M M I A without alcohol. What is it with alcohol?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, last week we heard from, uh, the Pine Street, um, block party that they, it was two hundred and fifty-four dollars is what they found.
M M I A?
Um, they found it through Payne West. M M I A has a, a spot on their website, which we've now placed a link to that, uh, gives a list of providers that, um, people can call around to and, um, find the, I guess, the best bang for their buck.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve second passage of an ordinance establishing a parade, special events, tours, and vendor requirements and amending the possession of intoxicating beverages code in the City of Helena.
Second, they're moving seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution to set fees charged by the Helena Police Department Support Services Division and amending resolution number two, zero, two, four, four. I see Director Danielson is up, so you have the floor.
I thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, tonight we have before you, um, the public hearing, uh, to set fees, um, to be charged by the Helena Police Department Support Services Division and amending resolution two, oh, two, four, four. Uh, we brought this, uh, discussion to the commission at the administrative meeting on April fifth, twenty twenty-three. And it was also passed, uh, the resolution of intention was passed by the commission, um, four to zero on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. And this is just the public hearing in order to set the fees, and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I will move to approve a resolution to set fees charged by the Helena Police Department Support Services Division and amending resolution number two, zero, two, four, four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution to set fees charged for the use of the Helena Civic Center and repeal resolution number two, zero, six, two, six. Director Smith and or Director Danielson and or Manager Burton, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
Um, we're here before you tonight to consider a resolution to set fees charged for the use of the Helena Civic Center and repeal resolution two, zero, six, two, six. Staff presented the proposed, proposed fee schedule to the commission on April fifth, twenty twenty-three in a administrative meeting. And the resolution of intention was approved with a four to zero vote. That staff recommendation is to move to approve a resolution to set fees charged for the use of the Helena Civic Center and repealing resolution two, zero, six, two, six.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
For Director Smith, just curious as to whether, uh, you got any public feedback about the proposed fees?
In this, uh, excuse me, Commissioner, um, as it relates to the Civic Center fees?
Yes.
No, there's been no.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would move to approval, a resolution to set fees charged for use of the Helena Civic Center and repealing resolution number two, zero, six, two, six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution to establish fees to be charged for the Last Chance Splash Water Park and Pool. Repealing resolution number two, zero, three, three, two. Manager, uh, well, Director Smith, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commission. Here before you this evening for your consideration of a resolution to establish fees to be charged for the Last Chance Splash Water Park and repealing resolution number two, zero, three, three, two. Staff presented the proposed fee schedule to the commission on April fifth, twenty twenty-three in an administrative meeting. And staff recommendation is to approve, move to approve a resolution to establish fees to be charged for the Last Chance Splash Water Park and Pool and repealing resolution number two, zero, three, three, two.
Any discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, uh, Director Smith. I got a question for you regarding the right, the increase. What is the increase for children that are, are residents and then who are not residents?
For the, for the pool, I do not have the fee schedule in front of me today. It is in the packet on my desk. I apologize for not having that.
I think I asked it rhetorically, um, so youth resident would go up fifty cents.
Correct.
And then non-resident would go up a dollar. So that it's, yeah, that sounds about right. Just wanted to make that clear for the public.
Yeah, they were nominal increases.
Cool. Thank you.
Commission, yes.
Uh, just, uh, how, how would you distinguish, uh, residents from non-residents?
Um, address, zip codes.
When the kids come on a company that don't have I D?
Well, you have to be over fourteen to be allowed in without a parent, Mr. Mayor.
And they don't have I Ds.
And then kids don't have I Ds. In some cases, you take their word for it.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a quick question. So we, there is very limited use of the season passes. Is it worth, and maybe this isn't a conversation for today since we need to pass this with the season coming up, but maybe the broader conversation about the operations overall, is it worth holding on to those passes? Since we have, uh, only two sold last year for the youth season pass and eighteen for the adult season pass?
Commissioner, that's a good question. Um, you may notice that the fee schedules throughout the Parks and Recreation Department have been simplified.
Yeah.
Condensed. From many pages to one or two pages. And a lot of situations like this with other operations, things were removed. That had zero numbers next to them and we're monitoring it on a year to year basis.
Okay, great, thanks. And one more comment, Mr. Mayor, I think just in context of what we discussed at the beginning of the meeting. During the city manager's report. This is an ongoing discussion and. Now that we have, I mean, if. Given that there is consensus to move forward to buy us some time. Do you, I mean, Director, do you see the path forward as you're giving? We are giving you time to basically figure out what the operations look like for us to break even, or at least. Need less of a subsidy. In future seasons.
Commissioner, the answer is yes. It will buy us some time.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Reed, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for Director Smith and Director Danielson, it was, uh, it's already been said mostly, but I think this is a great start. Um, I'm glad we did have the discussion, I believe, last week that we can revisit these fees. Um, I think it's important to take this first step. But I would like to see additional discussion and just on on the season passes. Um, I didn't know they existed. I think a lot of people didn't know they existed. So if if there is an opportunity to promote some of those things a bit more. Uh, even in the short term, I think that would be great because I think a lot of people are unaware that that is something that they can do. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Yes, please come forward.
I don't know if this is the right time for it. I wanted to address what we spoke about earlier or what you spoke. There was no opportunity for public comment earlier, but um, my name is Jamie Bright. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, I want to discuss the rumblings of the of the city pool reducing operating hours and reducing the length of the operating season. While I don't know the exact timeline for this decision. I do know that the city pool staff has been made aware that these changes are on the horizon potentially. Um, as a former lifeguard at the pool and a mother of a lifeguard that's currently working at the pool. Firsthand, I know the primary demographics of the population served by the city pool. I can tell you that that particular population will greatly suffer if the pool season is reduced. And if operating hours are cut. The many of the lower income families have limited opportunities to enjoy time as a family. In an affordable recreational settings. And the city pool is one of the only ways for these citizens to enjoy time together on the weekends. If the city is looking to tighten their belts with budget cuts, surely you'd be wiser to take money from other programs or budgets rather than taking from a group of citizens. That already has so little to give. With even fewer opportunities for affordable recreation on the weekends. Surely you know exactly what types of activities we'll be engaged in. When the pool patrons are left with facing weekend pool closures and a reduced operating season. Please do not provide more idle time for the children in lower lower demographics. Right now is the best time for more enrichment to be given to the lower income. And underprivileged groups. We want to reduce drug drug usage, crime, violence. We must provide more opportunities for safe and fun recreation and enrichment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. But just to clarify that, I think we discussed that, um, they were going to look for. We're going to be funding. Through a one-time use of ARPA money, so.
Understood. Um, thank you, Mayor. I understand that. I I think moving forward, we need to make it more than just a Band-Aid. This is not just a one-time problem. So.
I hear you and the, um. City manager was given the go-ahead to look at a more stable solution.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, my name is Ann Wakeman. And I'm here to say thank you for ARPA money. A Band-Aid is a wonderful thing when you need it and our pool needs it. So I appreciate the creative thinking that led you down that path. Um, the pool is critically important. Ditto what my friend just said. Um, it is a wonderful opportunity for families. I would love to see the pool hours expand rather than shrink. Number one, swimming is a very important safety skill. And due to the lack of pool access that many of our kids have in town, not all of them swim. I was working with a teenager. Getting enough driving hours in and he, as a teenager in our high school, can't swim. That bothers me in this area of rivers and boats and lakes. How can we have students that don't know how to swim? We don't have enough pool access. So expanding hours in the summer, making this a more available activity for families, I think is very. Important as we move forward. I'm a senior swimmer. AKA a master swimmer. And I love that big pool. It's critical if you're going to swim in meets to have access to a fifty meter pool because maybe you can beat people in your age group. If you practice a little bit. So know that there are senior swimmers who really appreciate the opportunity to swim in a bigger pool. Um, and it's a lovely place to be. We have a great facility that we should be very proud of. And try to expand what we're doing to promote it to the community, talk about what we have. There are costs involved. I understand this, but there are other ways to balance budgets. Having managed budgets, I sure get the challenges that you face and I appreciate the level of detail that you have to deal with. But please don't give up on our pool. Please don't simply accept that cutting back is what we have to do. Um, there are those of us that would happily work with you to find better answers. In the future, I'm so glad we have a Band-Aid for now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please. Yes.
Commissioners, my name is Cindy Sparing. I'm a nurse by vocation and actually I've experienced as an aquatic director for fifteen years at a facility here in town. Of which we ran it fairly successfully. And my questions are just on revenue that's being generated with swimming lessons. What swimming pools need in our city pool, because I do observe it. As the mother of a lifeguard at the city pool and a grandmother of a lifeguard at the city pool, I. Maintain detachment though there, even though I'm not involved in the aquatic community anymore. But I do know that a successful aquatic facility facility. Does need a successful revenue stream and I don't see that in those little tiny increment. Um, daily increases that have been proposed. Um, in the repealing of that resolution two zero three three two. But my question is for revenue stream. I don't know what's happening with swimming lessons.
Excuse me, ma'am.
My question is, my question is, how can I access? That information, like how many swimming lessons are being taught? Instructor hours, what the instructors are being paid, how much is being charged for those lessons? I can see online what the old fee schedule was, but I don't know if this is being addressed as a new. In the new, then the repealing of that and how that's going to work. But again, that city pool. Should be one of the biggest attractions during the summer for the city of Helena. It does need to have. Some type of something as a revenue stream bringing in consistent dollars, not really related to that. Those daily entrance fees because those go up and down with the weather. But if you have something consistent such as swim lessons or rental fees or those things. Then you have a better and more reliable revenue stream. Um, and that's just based upon my experience where I had to have a pool facility making money for the owners. So. Anyway, those are my questions. Who would answer those for me?
No one will answer them at this point. We, this is public comments and.
Oh, thank you. I thought this was the.
Your answers.
Answer.
You can get your answers from the city manager.
Okay.
After this or at a.
Thank you. So those are my questions and yes, and my comments then are should be biggest attraction for the city during this summer months. And then since we do get to do comments and not just questions, as this was explained earlier. Please understand the YMCA pool is closing for the summer. So one more pool is being taken out of action. They'll reopen in September. Um, the city pool will be closed then from those last two weeks of August. So there will be no real access to pools. The other pools in Helena Capital City, the Broadwater, the YM, um, East, um, Crossroads. All charge charge fairly fairly significant fees for public usage, twelve dollars to twenty dollars per time. The East Helena Pool will run June twelfth through the end of August. I think that's a great example. Shall we be looking at that too? What are they doing out there for revenue stream? I noticed that their calendar was pretty booked up online. As far as what they're doing for swim lessons and activities. And I don't know how that compares, um, side by side with our city pool here in Helena, but. Maybe something to explore as well, how our neighbor in East Helena is. So as long as we're commenting, those are some things that I found out, but I think it's very important. Again, that that be a big attraction for our city. Certainly something people look at when they come into town is where can I take my kids swimming besides the hotel? Um, because you can rent the Best Western, by the way, but, um, that's, it's not appropriate for. True swimming. And then again, as somebody mentioned too, swim lessons are vital. I've taught hundreds and hundreds of children how to swim. I can't even imagine how many lives have not. Been lost because those kids learned how to swim. And so those are things that that city pool is. And and I think we as citizens of this great city are responsible for that too. So. There's my thoughts and those are my questions and. I guess we speak later. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments. In fact, you taught my kids, so.
I did teach yours. I was going to dig out my stacks of records and I'm like, I remember your kiddo, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Please.
Thank you. I'm Ann Gilbert. I'm a longtime swim coach. I'm the race director for the Montana Women's Triathlon. Um, retired nurse at the St. Peters Hospital. And I am passionate about swimming primarily from a health standpoint of, um, I believe that swimming is the best sport ever. It's the only sport you can do all your life from zero to Charlotte has shown us hundred years old. It's a great rehab for people at the hospital. It is a. It's just. Like I said, the best sport ever. But as a community. We have an obligation to promote the safety part of swimming. Montana is third in the nation in drowning rates and, um. That that comes back to us and whatever we can do to promote that in our community. Is wonderful. Um, I want to thank you all for. Not closing the pool, for not reducing hours that are already established. I was concerned that the weekends were going to be shut down for the kids that. That's when their parents can take them, but thank you for keeping that alive. Um, I would also like to push for having a longer season. I know that Missoula opens on Memorial Day and they close on Labor Day. I think that's totally workable. I can't imagine that what you put into the pool to open it. For only what, six weeks or seven weeks that it can't stretch out another four weeks. Um, I can understand why the splash park and the need for more lifeguards with all that stuff, which is great in the summer. But I work with and swim with a lot of adults. The Helena Masters and connected well there and they would love to be able to swim outside for the entirety of summer. From those holidays. So I I hope that in your discussions with. That you can figure that out. I was also a lifeguard, um, as a first, well Dairy Queen was my first job, but I quickly figured out that lifeguard would be better. So when I was fifteen, I became a lifeguard and as a high school student all the way through, I I that's what I did. I lifeguarded. The thing I hear about the city pool is we have to close early because all the kids go back to college. I don't get it. I mean, I don't know what the miss is other than we don't have high school swimming. We don't teach our kids in the city how to swim. Which is another thing. But, um, I think that the city pool has. A great opportunity to promote this in our community, safety. And, um, I'm happy to help whatever discussions that need to happen, um. To get more kids in the pool. And, um, that's what we do with the Women's Triathlon. We get more women in the water, hoping that that passes down to their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised. Give me just a moment. Elizabeth Kraus.
You have the floor, Elizabeth.
Oh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say. One, thank you for all of your solutions proposed tonight and two. I believe that there could be an opportunity to charge. A lot more for people who want to see this pool succeed. And want to support people in the community who may not be able to afford. Uh, private health club fees. And so I just am hoping in this conversation of. The long-term solution for this pool that we'll think about how we might be able to. Earn more revenue from people who would willingly and maybe even enthusiastically support this pool.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no other public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution to establish fees. To be charged for the Last Chance Splash Water Park and Pool. And repealing resolution number two zero three three two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Commissioner Shirlip.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution to establish fees to charge for the. City of Helena Parks and Open Land Uses. And Recreation Programs and repealing resolution number two zero six zero two. Director Smith, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor Commission, we have before you today to consider a resolution to establish fees to be charged for the city of Helena. Parks and Open Space Uses and Recreation Programs. And repealing resolution number two zero six zero two. Staff presented the proposed fee schedule to the commission. On April fifth, twenty twenty three in an administrative meeting. Commission, the resolution of intention was approved in the commission meeting with a motion. Vote of four to zero. Staff recommendation, move to approve the resolution to establish fees to be charged. For the city of Helena Park and Open Space Uses and Recreation Programs and repealing resolution two zero six zero two.
Thanks, Director Smith. Comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just one final question. Um, on the courts and field fees. Um, so we have not been charging prior to. This proposed. Um, resolution, we haven't been charging for camps and tournaments. Field use.
What? The.
It's listed as zero for current rate. That's why I ask.
Commissioner, without the document in front of me, I'm uncertain.
Okay.
One of the things, excuse me, Mayor Commission, one of the things when we were adjusting our fee schedule. Was eliminating some and combining some because there were duplication of rentals and services. So that is a new. Line item.
Got it.
Term. By condensing multiple previous line items in the fee schedule.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion. Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'll move to approve a resolution to establish fees to be charged. For city of Helena. Park and Open Space Uses and Recreation Programs and repealing. Resolution number two zero six zero two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, do we have any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm. I'm very sorry. I was trying to find, uh, the fee so I could ask a question. It took me longer than I thought. Could I ask a very quick question?
Please.
Um, if we have somebody who is, I'm not sure what how we're defining busking. I know there was some legislation around that, but forgive me, I did not read it. Um, if we have someone like a balloon person on the walking mall, would they fall under busking? And if they wanted to be out there for more than thirty days, would they be paying the four hundred and fifty or is that a different category?
Commissioners, the busking is new to the fee schedule due to the balloon. Street performer busker who have, um, moved to Helena. He has chosen the. Seven hundred dollar annual fee. To bus. And. I'm not sure if I answered your question. What was the exact question, Commissioner?
That that was, um, so we have a seasonal is four hundred and fifty. I'm not seeing an annual for seven.
I misspoke. I'm sorry. It's four hundred and fifty dollars for the busking. I misspoke. Um, I was referring to. The seven hundred dollar annual fee that we do for the food trucks.
Okay, and so a quick question, when we set that fee, since it is new, was there was there consultation with people who would be. Okay, and so a, a quick question. When we set that fee, since it is new, was, was there consultation with people who would be impacted by that? Because I don't know. You know, how four hundred and fifty resonates with someone selling balloons. So I don't know, um, how much outreach there was around that category.
There's not much, excuse me, Commissioner, there's not much outreach. It is new. Um, it is new to the fee schedule. It is. Street performers fall under this as well and they're growing. You know, as we speak, much like. The food truck industry has started with a couple of, and now there's ten. And we see the trend heading in that direction with the busking and street performing as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I might, just a quick follow-up.
Please.
Um, perhaps it is my ancient roots, um, in, in a different place, but I think, um. Having street performers may be something that is, um, something good for our downtown and, and can be a. You know, a useful feature. I'm a little concerned about how high that fee is, given, you know, the. The income stream of somebody who does that. Um, so I don't know what our options are, you know, if we pass this now and it seems like we're getting feedback that that fee is just too high, given that it is a new category. Would we be able to reconsider that down the road in, you know, six months or so, if, if we're hearing that that is cost prohibitive?
Um, thank you, Commissioner. But of course, how did we get to the fees?
We did market research for other communities that. And worked with the busker himself. To talk about his experiences throughout the country. What other cities charge and we researched that as well. And they kind of fall into the food truck category, but they're not quite there. So, um, we're in line with other communities. And have had zero negative feedback from buskers.
Well, um, I, I, I will side with you, Commissioner, and maybe we can look at it. And see where it goes after here. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
See that?
I have no public comment.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a motion.
Oh, yeah, we did that before. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer, okay, has it been seconded? Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Commissioner Shertlock.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, and I just want to find a comment, Manager Burton, you know, we've had some joint projects with the county. And I believe we need to start talking about some of our other projects that we know that the county access. I E. We're struggling with swimming, I E. We're struggling with golf course. Those things, maybe we need to start talking to the county to, you know. See what they can do from there and. Just my one say.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I, I think that that point's well taken.
Any other comments? This meeting is adjourned.